We'll open the meeting, uh, this meeting as usual is being broadcast live and digitally recorded, so please know that. Uh, and we will start with open session, is anybody here for open session? No? Okay, Laurie, you wanna take us through some announcements?
Yeah, so announcements, we have the craft fair coming up on Saturday, December first from nine to three, that's at the senior center next store. Um, they're having crafters, vendors, raffle baskets and baked goods and food. Um, so that will be nine to three, tree lighting, December fourth, six thirty, caroling will be at the senior center from five forty-five to six fifteen. And then the tree lighting will be shortly after at the common, um, Katie did put a bunch of lights up there, she showed us today, so it will be a lot brighter up there, it will be nice.
And just so you know, so there's, there's, the people involved, uh, on just the coordination of it, um, are, uh, Ryan's been copied, I've been copied. Bill Hanson, who's on the town center committee and was part of the original lighting ceremonies copied, Katie's copied, Nancy Afonso, who's coordinating the, uh, senior singing.
Yeah, seniors.
And then Jill Peterson as well, the principal, so she's coordinating the kids and all that.
Yep.
We're just, uh, we haven't heard back yet from Lions confirmation that they're gonna bring the truck out there yet, so we're just, uh.
I talked to Tom today, and he said he was gonna bring it up at the next meeting, which is Wednesday.
Okay.
Is that the good truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, he said the, might be slim chance that'll be there because they already winterized the thing and it's put away for the winter. Cause it's a brand new trailer, they just don't wanna, um, take a chance of getting salt and stuff on it.
Well, I guess it was one and done with the boot, boot drive then.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, um, so anyway, we'll, we'll see, but we'll, we'll, there, there's plenty of, uh, sort of refreshments and stuff that are gonna be brought over by, by the seniors and, and the carol, carolers for, for that. Hopefully we have a good turnout, okay, sorry.
Well, Brunch with Santa, Saturday, December eighth, that's something done by special events, it's gonna be at the high, uh, the Hubbardson Center School cafeteria. They do snacks, they have raffles as well, you can get pictures with Santa, it's ten dollars entry per family, you can get as many pictures as you want. Um, Hubbardson Light Fight, you can still sign up, I believe there's still time to register, December seventh to the ninth and the fourteenth to the sixteenth. So it's gonna be two weekends, three days from five to eight P M., you can drive around, we'll have maps as soon as it gets closer. Um, and then she also posted it online, I believe we posted it last year, giving you the route, um, also GPSing it.
The signs are nice, the, uh, that are up there, I like the color and stuff.
Mm-hmm, they're bright, so.
It's gonna be a little bit of a challenge, I actually, cause, uh, the Friday after Thanksgiving, I always put up our, our, uh, Christmas display. And, um, it took me like four hours and we don't have that big of a display, cause I had to snow blow and shovel the front lawn.
Yeah.
Because you have this much crusty snow, you can't really snow blow it too, else you could chop it up and do it. And then you got stakes that are like this big that stake down and that, that would be the whole c- snow column, so you gotta get it out of the way, it was, we'll see, we'll see how creative people get with snow.
Oh, yeah, I, I got home from vacation, it was eighty-five and now I'm in snow trying to put up Christmas decorations.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thanks. Last thing for the volunteer appreciation, I didn't send out cards, these are for the volunteers for town, um, any of the committees, boards, committees, things like that. Um, you know, from Board of Selectmen to Planning Board, Agricultural Commission, Cable Committee, all of those, uh, appointed or, um, elected positions. We're having the volunteer appreciation December tenth from four to six, prior to the select meeting in the senior center. So if you have an R S V P and you're watching this, R S V P, so we kinda have an idea of how many people are coming.
What time is that again?
Four to six.
Did we extend, did, did, did Donnie Berthew or Ann Goby come last year? Do you remember?
I don't remember if they came, but I'll send an invite, she was actually in today, um, doing office hours, so I'll send an invite to them.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, so we know we're waiting for Ryan, uh, to come back from the council of aging meeting, which will be back soon, but, uh, we talked about taking care of a few other items. Out of order on the agenda, and I, why don't we start with item seven there, the, uh, the wage authorizations.
Okay, so wage authorization, Neil, he completed, I believe he's at six months, um, it happened within a certain month. Uh, it was retroactive to eleven seven, so that must've been his six month anniversary. So we're just looking for approval of the wage authorization or waiving it and with the retroactive date of November seventh.
So I'll make a motion to waive the, it's a notification period. For Neil Gogan.
Second.
New wages.
Retro.
Retro to, was it May seventh?
Uh, November seventh.
November seventh, that's what he said.
Second of motion.
Discussion, on my favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, appointment?
Um, so this is going to be for myself, this is A D A coordinator, uh, in town, there is no particular person that needs to do it. Um, we've looked and, and we've reached out to the A D A, um, from the state to see if there was anything that needed to be done. So Ryan and I had talked about who should do it in town, um, so it was down to either him or I, and I said, you know, that would be something that I would be willing to do. Um, Larry was it before, obviously he retired and then it just was an open position, so we're just trying to fill the things that we can here.
What, uh, do you have to go to any training or, uh?
Uh, there is a bunch of reading material online, I told Ryan that I would be looking at courses and stuff like that as well, any information that I can get, whether I go through the state, you know, or anything like that. So, but it happened right before I went on vacation, so I wasn't able to look into it next week.
Okay.
I make my motion then to, uh, appoint Laurie Reed, it's the A D A coordinator.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on my favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Great, thanks Laurie. You'll, you'll be well versed on it by the time the town center gets reconstructed and you have A D A stuff going all over the place.
Yes, yes, I will, all the bumped, you know, all the.
Laurie, a lot of the, uh, info too on that is in the building code, there's a section.
Okay.
Dedicated to architectural access.
Okay, thank you. Real funny.
Stay to the rest. Um, okay, I'll do the committee updates, uh, there are none, so we haven't met, um, since our last meeting two weeks ago here with either the Q E M P task force. I'm just waiting for their notification for our next meeting with our sub, subgroups, um, and then the town center committee. Uh, we did, we did meet a few weeks ago just to discuss the details of where things stood with the road projects in town, as well as the, uh, the lighting, uh, ceremony. But other than that, we're just waiting to see the next phase of design from, um, from T E C and we'll go from there.
What's the status of that meeting that was canceled?
That's about to happen, yeah.
Um, the new Braintree.
Uh, I got that confirmation today, it might've come when I was on vacation, so I figured I would send it out, um, it is December sixth, it's gonna be December sixth.
December sixth, when is that, what day is that?
Uh, I believe it's a Thursday, right, cause the tree lighting's on the fourth.
That's correct.
And at what time?
I will get it for you.
And that, is that also gonna be in New Braintree again?
I believe so, but don't quote me on that, like I said, I will send it out, I did see that come across today, I was playing catch up today.
Did you say there was a date?
December sixth is what I received.
Okay. Uh, let's see, what else can we chop off here, um? Um. We're not gonna do the town administrator entry plan, the classification hearing, is that what you're here for?
No, she is here for the building department fee review.
Oh, that's right, there it is, um, all right, well, why don't we get to the?
What about old business?
No, uh, yeah, we might as well just get to that first, so item four, their new business, um, building department fee review?
Yeah, Ryan has my package from M R P C, but basically we took all the building department fees, um, for all of the surrounding towns. I think it was maybe twelve to twenty of them, and compared where we stand against all the others.
There it is up there.
I don't remember anything being really out of whack, except, um, maybe our roofing, which comes in at a flat forty fee, as you see. Some of the values, you see forty per job for roofing, we might wanna change that to, um, being a value-based fee. That was the only thing that really.
Why, why? Just cause I don't, just?
Um, forty, well, as you could, and I don't even know, I guess cause everybody that, all the building inspectors that have come in, it says forty is really cheap, but if you look, we're really not.
Okay.
Cause we go twenty-five is the low, I can't remember who that was, someone had twenty-five dollar per job, then sixty, and then the value base, so we're right in the middle. Um, but we're. I guess I don't really know, I compared these fees with Ryan thinking that we were really loved, that they needed to be readdressed. I think the last time we did a fee change was twenty fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
So, but I think we're still on, on target, wants anyone else anything that was really glaring, I?
No, I, we saw this before, I, I don't, I don't think so, I didn't see anything that stood out to me.
Okay, and I'm not really, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't even know Ryan put me on the agenda.
Oh.
So I'm not really sure what he's thinking, I don't know if he's in agreement that we're, you know, writing, I mean, I don't think we can compare ourselves with Gardner. I think we're maybe posted off, you know, Princeton and the smaller towns.
Yeah, agreed. No, yeah, no, I definitely agree, but we can readdress it if him when he comes back in here, he'll be in here any minute and make sure, we'll just sort of table this item, uh, and come back to it, um.
Okay.
Uh, I do think that's probably all the stuff we can take care of while he's out of the room now, because he's, he's gonna have to be updating us on a few of these items. So I think we'll just sort of take a little bit of a break, um, till he comes in, we'll stay in open session. We, we have a, um. Um, I am, I'm sure we do, but as far as the plan for meetings, December through what do we have?
We have all the way through the fiscal year.
We do, okay, so we did all that already?
Yep. Mm-hmm. Am I trouble in this one? No. But I can get you that list, do you want that?
Uh, no, I was just, I was just making sure that, I, I couldn't remember, my, usually we get back to you guys with dates that are obvious conflicts for us. Whether or not, I just, I don't remember doing that.
We did that, that, the, before the fiscal year, yeah, cause the meetings when we had like laid out before, they went fiscal year, fiscal year.
Very beginning, okay.
So we did that in, what would that be like, June, I think we might've done it. So in December, we only have the one meeting and that's seems pretty typical and then anything we've kind of moved around as needed.
Yeah. I just know school vacations are always something that conflict, you guys going anywhere for school vacations? You have tournaments or something?
Um, unfortunately, the only place we're going is after New Year's, we, we go up to Buffalo.
Yeah.
It's sad not being broadcast. Me and. Jamie's fan club.
Jamie's fan club, yeah, she's back there, so she should hear, but it's not. Something's out there.
Really?
Yeah.
How'd you get that overlay like that?
Go to the drive.
Which drive, the team drive?
If you, uh, go up to that thing, tile.
That one?
Up below.
Yeah.
Okay, I can just, then just hit it right there.
Probably double click it.
Thank you, both of you.
It's on, it's on now.
So do you have to go away from the holidays?
It's on now, all right, we're back on.
Oh.
No, we, we stick around. Our, our next, uh, travel thing for, for soccer is, is in. We have Pennsylvania, you know, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, um, South Carolina and Maryland. And, and like, April, May.
April and May, mm-hmm.
So you're on vacation now, though?
Yeah, not really, tournament, tournament last weekend, tournament this weekend.
You got your heat working, Jeff?
Had to replace the whole furnace.
Did you?
Yep, oh, that was a bad, few day, more than a few days.
Is that covered by anything?
Um, no.
Covered by you.
Yeah. One good aspect, uh, of that whole thing was that week is the week that we normally would've been down in Disney. And it would, and when the, when the furnace boiler cracked, would've been the day after we left, so we would've had nine days of water.
Yeah. Just pouring in.
Coming into the cellar, and we would've come home to that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, but then insurance would've covered it.
Dan, need to put up a lot of decorations?
Slowly add to it, decent little display.
Fifty-seven hundred bucks.
Yeah. It's never a good time, though.
Hello. We're in a little bit of a holding pattern, we've gotten through a few of our items that we can do and we're waiting for Ryan to come back from the council of aging.
Oh.
So, few minutes.
Well, we're not on till seven anyways.
But just so you know, we are being broadcast live and digitally recorded, so. Do you, do you put up a bunch though?
No, no, just lights in the windows and, uh.
We probably have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, maybe twelve, fourteen things.
Oh, really?
Uh, so we've accumulated them, plus some lights in trees and stuff like that.
We do do a couple of, uh, deer.
Yeah, yeah, we get, that's part of our thing, deer, polar bears, penguins.
That is the joint public meeting, so December sixth, Thursday, six thirty P M., twenty Memorial Drive, New Braintree, which is New Braintree Town Hall.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that.
Wanna forward one to Mike?
I, yeah, I will. I'll forward it to you all, so if you can add it to a calendar, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
We're almost done, so I'm just waiting for your part.
Meeting two.
All right, so we got through items one, two, seven, eight and nine, like ten minutes ago. Uh, and we, we realized that we need you, so.
That's, that's good, happy to hear that.
So what we did do is we talked a little bit about the building department fee review, we, we, we went through some of it, but, uh, wanted to make sure that we had you chime in on your, I guess, opinion on this.
Sure, so we have been reviewing, uh, by department, all fees across, when we can, when we can encourage our boards and committees to review their fees. So the, the planning board is discussing their fees, building is discussing their fees, I know that Laurie brought the fees in front of you, uh, a couple of months ago. Just trying to get everyone to look at it and perhaps develop a, 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 say battle rhythm, not, not military today. A policy for consistently reviewing these to make sure, um, and I liked the work that Patty did here, um, looking at area fees and sort of comparing, comparing. So that we're in the same ballpark as everyone else. I saw a planning board update today and they haven't discussed it yet, but their, their methodology currently was to look at C P I and inflation since the last time they did it, which was, uh, more than a decade ago. So the, there's many ways to tackle it and I just wanna continue to show you these fees so that if, if we do, uh, set a time where we're gonna discuss fees, increases or decreases. That, that you're informed and you understand the staff has been looking at it pretty heavily, not just, uh, winging it.
Okay, no, okay, great, so.
Patty did a great job, so, I like giving her credit and having her come here and talk about it.
All right, well, we put her on the spot, worked out great.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. All right, why don't we get back into order, so we've got a, um, how long is your entry plan report gonna take, you think? You wanna tackle that or you wanna get through town administrator report, old business, other stuff, and then do the tax classification public hearing at seven?
It'll probably take more than ten minutes, unless you wanna split it in half.
No, we might as well stay consistent, why don't we, why don't we get, get off with, um, the remainder of the items, um, that are, are on item four. That is not the tax classification hearing and then go to old business and the town administrator report and then we'll, we'll probably be ready around seven.
Sounds good, so financial management policies, it sounds exciting. Okay, so I'm gonna just pop this up on the screen. We have been reviewing our financial management policies, starting, as you know, starting at the finance team level. And, um, then working to this board and the finance committee, we're gonna meet about these same four policies next week. So the goal is to publish all financial management policies by the end of this fiscal year. In order to have documented policy and procedure to guide all financial management, so that helps us with, uh, anti-fraud work, that helps us set policy goals, put budgets into context. And also helps us with our, our bond ratings and other things that, that really impact us financially. So just a few policies there, all the policies are in, um, have been in your folders, so this is just sort of a recap up here of, of what they are. And we're looking for, if you're ready, just support of these policies, uh, to publish them and to get them into place.
Yeah, I think this is really organized and I, I think this is probably one of those things that our auditors like to see us having in place, right?
They do, so it's, it's definitely, these, these have been in place, let's say, uh, people know about them and these are the policies and procedures we follow, so these aren't new.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, this is just documenting by best practice, the policies and procedures that we have and publishing them so that the public can see them and of course, our auditors and our, and our, um, bond raiders. So that, you know, they know that we're following these policies and, and we believe in them enough to make them public and look at them every year, which I think is important. So the first one is anti-fraud, it defines fraud and, um, most people can define fraud, but it gets really specific on it. And also employee responsibilities and fraud prevention, so every employee here has, has roles, but some of us have more significant roles than others. For example, when I sign warrants, and, and Jeff, you've done this for me. Sign warrants with dispersments, um, I take ten percent of those submittals from, from folks and I, and I test them. Meaning I look at them, I go through the documents and, and make sure that, uh, it is what it says it is and that they're for the right purposes and they're using the right thing. So that's just a check and balance with, uh, accounting, the departments and everybody, something I've implemented where my signature goes in. So I review all of them and then take ten percent of them and test them in more detail. Having everybody know that also makes people, you know, less willing to commit fraud in the future. Uh, so those types of commitments, this is an example of one of the types of responsibilities we have in fraud, fraud prevention. So the policy also talks about procedures for reporting, um, how to report suspicious activities, employee protections when they do report, cause that can be, that can be scary for an employee.
Yeah.
Uh, to, to say something, whether it's a friend or, or someone who's in charge of them, it's, it's not an easy thing to do. Um, how to protect our investigation documents and, and, you know, implement them, anonymous allegations, false allegations, disciplinary actions, responsibility of media contacts. Which I'm sure this board has, remembers, uh, training, education, awareness and disclosure of requirements and protocols. It just formalizes what we, what we already have in place, we get a good rating on our fraud prevention, I just wanted to make sure we documented it. The next policy is debt management, so this again defines what debt is and what we can borrow for. It limits financing to projects with a hundred thousand dollars of value and a three-year useful life, so we talked about, a lot about those, uh, parameters with our finance team. And we, we believe that's the best recommendation for us, so you don't really wanna borrow for things that are under a hundred thousand, say a, a police cruiser or something like that. Should be in a pay-as-you-go, using free cash type approach or operating budget rather than, uh, long-term debt. Also places debt parameters at two to five percent of the operating budget, so just to put that into context, two percent of the operating budget's a hundred and eighty thousand, five percent is four hundred fifty-one, that's this year's budget. We currently have two hundred and seventy-one thousand in debt, so we're at three percent, three percent is what we're recommending we stay at. So with debt, debt always sounds bad, you want some debt, but not crazy debt, so you want enough debt that you can borrow, cause the town doesn't have enough money or revenue to, um, to do longer-term projects and pay for it all at once. So you need to have some debt, but you don't wanna have so much debt that you're strangling your budget, so three percent is right in between the recommendation, uh, or averages. It also sets the structure in terms of our debt to Department of, uh, Local Services Standards and prioritizing protecting our bond rating, which is important. Cause that's the interest we pay when we borrow money, and we wanna keep that as, as, as strong as possible to pay the least amount of money. The next policy is dispersment, so this establishes policies for the town accountant, the town treasurer and the town administrator, so this is, uh, town monies going out to buy things or expenditures. And includes how to delegate that authority, which Jeff, we did before, um, can give the signing powers over to the Board of Selectmen and vice versa, uh, for dispersing those town funds. And it also creates some checks and balances to make sure that we're doing it correctly, which is, which is important. Um, and sometimes it's harder than it sounds, and you're paying a bill, you need to make sure that you're, uh, doing it properly, uh, it's coming from the right appropriated amounts and, and was discussed prior to. And the last policy is forecasting, I can't tell, I'm a fan of forecasting, so this solidifies forecasting as an annual requirement, um, and then set some parameters for that. So, so Dan, you talked about, uh, forecasting, what is your model, what is the way you attack it, I'm gonna be presenting that at our next meeting. Uh, so this, this policy helps guide how I do that, so local receipts, we wanna get to about ninety percent of prior year actuals. So what that does is allows us to spend that money, but also make sure we're not over projecting that revenue, so that we don't have enough when, um, you know, the tax rate, as you'll hear tonight, comes around. Also allows us to develop a little bit of free cash, which we passed the policy for last time, uh, cause we need that money for just general protection of the budget and also for pay-as-you-go capital and things like that.
Is the local receipt just from, um, property tax levy or is it from all receipts?
Local receipts and is defining this policy.
The ninety percent of it, I mean, are you, so the ninety percent.
It's just local receipts, so just your, um, motor vehicle excise tax, fees, penalties, interest, et cetera.
Excise.
No, not, not the tax rate, we wouldn't be able to function. Um, so right now, we're at about ninety-five percent projection, or I will be with my forecasting, so we're gonna try and back it down to get to ninety percent. Um, hopefully the economy stays strong and we, we can do that, but, um, when you cut back on revenue forecasting, you're obviously putting less money in the budget. So we wanna make sure we have a five-year plan to reduce that. Um, also level funding state aid, cause we, we don't really know what that's gonna be, again, this is projecting revenue into the future. And then you want a conservative new growth estimate, um, and have that grow as, as it becomes a, I don't wanna say legitimate number, but a stronger number that's, that's based more on what it's actually gonna be. And then expenditure forecasting, so this is the other side, uh, we're ex- expecting level service budgets, uh, we're expecting that we're gonna meet our, our school assessments, uh, and their assumed growth. And that we're gonna retain debt within the operating budget, so this is some of the key factors with forecasting, so this will become a reality and on December tenth, when we do our fi- five-year financial forecast. Which is complete and being reviewed by our finance team right now. So those are the four po- policies again.
Is the, um, the five-year capital plan incorporated into the fi- five-year financial forecast?
It's not, cause of the, the Collin Center's revamping it.
Yeah.
But in the future, it will be, so we would put the two together for two thousand twenty-one, F Y twenty-one, but right now you'll get financials and then capital. Uh, when I present my budget to you, the town administrator's budget, the forecast will be updated and combined, so it will be both, how does this impact our five-year and our capital? That'll be the last part of the presentation.
Okay. Okay, so we did the building department de- fee, uh, review, moves us on to the town officers' winter closure policy.
So, uh, with the policies, just looking, if you guys are comfortable with the policies.
Yeah, we've had about four different ones over the last four years.
No, I'm sorry, with the financial management policies, just looking for a vote of support.
Oh, sure. Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, support or approve the financial management policy.
Second of motion.
Discussion, on my favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now to the, uh, town officers' winter closure policy.
Yeah, so this is, um, you have seen it before, it, it is, it's similar policy, so it outlines, um, what, how we are going to, uh, conduct ourselves during emergency weather and other situations. Calling it up here. So the main ones here, um, that, that residents and the board would be concerned about, so a closure, delayed, um, opening, so to start the day. Would be declared by myself, the town administrator and documented as administrative absence, which is not charged against employees.
And, and since you're not local necessarily, um, what, what sort of consultation would you make to help determine whether or not it makes sense?
So Travis and I communicate, um, whenever the storm starts, but when we expect a storm somewhere between five and six A M. is, is when we start communicating. Um, I'd, I'd also take into account the schools, considering they're located in the same area, and then, you know, we're predicting these things well ahead of time. But I don't take my, my commute into account, I know that, that's something that I should address. Um, I have the ability to work remotely, uh, and do so whenever, whenever I'm not here, to include some weekends, so, um, I would not be not working, I'd just be working remotely. Um, so my ability to get here wouldn't impact my decision.
I use that exact statement all the time, too.
Well played. But it's true.
I know.
Uh, and then other things that do come up here, uh, we're connected to the school's water system and sewer system sometimes, so occasionally we have issues there. This does talk about those extreme conditions or intolerable working conditions, uh, I just have a personal problem having employees come into a building that isn't functioning correctly, so. Although it would have to be a serious issue when it does happen, this covers that type of closure as well. Um, but I didn't expect such heavy snow in November, so normally we'd back this policy back into a September, October, but I, I didn't wanna will it to snow either, so. Uh, but looking for your approval on this policy, uh, to, to implement. Uh, it also talks about, we're gonna use primary notification as, as text message for now, until we get a better handle on our new Swift nine-one-one service, so text will be primary, um, and it goes through the executive assistant.
So you wanna motion to, for that? I move to accept the town office winter closure policy as presented by Ryan.
I'm sorry, discussion, on my favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, okay, well, we have hit seven o'clock here, so might as well get right to the, uh, the tax classification public hearing, um. Um, is there anything we need to read out loud? To start this off?
Last line on the page four. You've heard the excess levy capacity.
We should probably, I remember talking to us about this, read the ad that was in the paper. Laura's gonna get that out.
I killed some trees unnecessarily.
You never know.
I know. Last year, I made all those copies I didn't have enough. But we wanted to drive out in the rain, I guess.
Okay, this is a public hearing notice from the town of Hubbardston. This was posted in the Garder News.
Yeah, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, the Board of Selectmen will hold a tax classification hea- uh occasion hearing on Monday, November twenty sixth, two thousand eighteen at seven PM in the Slate Building. Seven A Main Street, Hubbardston, Mass. That is now. Purpose of the hearing is to determine percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of property, residential, commercial, industrial, open space and personal property. Interested taxpayers will be allowed the opportunity to present their views orally or in writing at said hearing.
Can you scan a copy of that to me for this?
All right, what you got?
Okay, so you have the tax classification hearing packet in front of you?
We have.
Okay, so going through um.
Yes. Sorry.
That's okay. I mean, I used to just like hand the papers out, so. I have, I have plenty extras if anyone just wants to read the paper. Anybody else? It's easy. Papers, sometimes papers. There you go. So um so we're here to um set the tax rate and just go through um the.
Yep.
The tax levy this year, um some part terminology is explained on page three. But um what I've included in every year, uh so the levy is um the amount of the property taxes that can be raised. So um this year, we had um raised property taxes of seven million one hundred and twenty nine hundred and thirty six dollars. But it was an increase of three hundred and fifty six thousand one hundred and fifty four dollars and thirty four cents over last year's levy. Um the levy ceiling is um eleven million dollars and so you're certainly not close to that. Um and can only get there by capital debt or debt exclusions overrides, things like that. Uh new growth was eighty nine thousand four hundred and two dollars. Um last year, it was ninety three. Um and this year, we got to eighty nine. Um, actually, some personal property helped, but uh last year's ninety three included two solar projects. Typically, your new growth runs around sixty thousand dollars at best. Um you had a couple of new houses built. We chased personal property and new growth up until the very last minute. Um because we know you need it in order to make things happen here. But um hopefully, next year, your um this solar project, where we've been talking about. Our one four forty seven Williams uh Ville Road will come online and you'll have that for new growth. The thing that helped also this year was Countryhead built a their second, opened their second building. And part of a third is under construction, um so that helped a lot um with your new growth this year. Um so it's hard in a town that doesn't build a lot and doesn't have a lot of plans for it. So the levy limit, um maximum allowable is seven million one thirty two. And you levied seven million one twenty nine, so um the excess levy capacity is three thousand seven hundred and seventy four dollars and three cents. Uh which is a good thing, because you don't like to leave excess levy on the table. You don't use it, you you lose it from one year to the next. So on the uh following pages, re- valuations by class. Um so there is still ninety three and a half percent of the town is made up of. Um residential and six and a half percent on commercial, industrial and personal property. Again, just a a heavy, there's not anything really to shift to. So I would recommend that you maintain your single rate.
What what makes up most, I know, you know, we know with commercial, industrial, what makes up most of our personal property?
Um the telephone company, Verizon is big, Mass Electric is big. You only have thirty two accounts, because you you voted that ten thousand dollar, probably a big mistake years ago. But um you would have had a lot more. We still have to send all the forms out. Because you, they're still in business in the town, but you gave up a lot of revenue, not a lot, but you gave up revenue. Um you still have to, we still have to send our forms out. So um.
What year was that, do you know?
Was it five years ago?
I think it was longer than that.
Longer, yeah.
Yeah, I can check the date and, yeah, it's just a matter of going on the DLS website and. Pulling up the local option and see when you decided to take it off. But um you could always go back to town meeting and ask them to put it back on. You might, depending on the crowd, you know. The business people aren't there, you could just win the battle with some of your residential ratepayers who just wanna add a little more. To the mix.
You recommending that's something we consider?
You know, if you're, a dollar's a dollar. Um the average tax bill's going up about two hundred dollars. Every little bit helps lower, you add a little personal property, add it to your business people. Um so in terms of a developing a business friendly community, maybe that's why you. Agreed to adjust it to the ten thousand dollars. Maybe the majority of it is all home businesses.
Portion of that have to do with like um farm animals and stuff?
No, that's a whole different local option, yeah. Yeah, so you, most communities voted that in. And so the only, I guess, losers in farm excise was um anybody that was a farm that's incorporated. Because those are still being taxed. Um and that, so the farm community was lobbying very hard for the state to then. Add that language a little bit further and extend it to corporations. So it was really for the local farmer who was in chapter and um running a small business on their farm, just making ends meet. But not the corporate um ones, so they still are paying their share.
On the values by uh class.
Yeah.
Um it says residential is ninety three percent. And uh six percent was the other.
Six and a half.
Yeah, some of the the other towns, like you you wouldn't know like Rutland or Barry, what those percentages like around us. Are are we way off?
Um, you're probably similar, but um I could bring that information to you. If you'd like to know that, I'd be happy to put that together. So surrounding communities or communities of your size.
It, was that presented by, the the presentation that we had by the finance committee, was that in there? Do you remember?
Ish, yeah, some of the data touched on on that, the percentage of residential versus.
With surrounding towns, I feel like that there was like a central mass piece of it, there was a towns under five thousand piece of it. There seemed to be some some data floating around, from what I recall.
Yeah, and another reason why we're trying to create a bench, a community of benchmarks, so that we could easily tell. Diane, come in with these co- ten communities, these are the ones we care about, like Barry, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones that maybe like Westminster and Rutland, but just the other towns in the Quavon Regional District.
So the 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 good and bad part of data is, it depends on what you wanna see, so we can give it to you in any way you want. Uh but creating those, these are the communities we compare ourselves to, is is kinda the easiest way to do that, cause then it's always the same data request or pull. Let's let's do that then. We are, we're working on it.
Yeah.
Let the finance committee lead that charge.
And we're off to, yeah. It goes on and off.
Um, so shifting the tax front, I guess I I got to that line, Board of Rec- Assessors' recommendation is stay with the single tax rate. Um and with all of the information based off the recap, the um estimated tax rate would be fifteen dollars and twenty two cents. Um and your fiscal year eighteen was fifteen thirteen, two thousand seventeen was fifteen twenty three. Just to give you an idea of uh the shifts in taxes, but. So the overall valuation, the town value did go up um from two hundred and um. I mean, the overall average, single family home, the overall overall valuation of the town did increase by twenty million dollars, four point six percent. Um the average single family home went up very similarly. So uh it was two hundred and forty six thousand for a single family home, this year two fifty seven. The tax bill was increased to a hundred and ninety five, the average. Um and then I added the condominiums, um condominium class went up. Here about what, ten? And five percent, look, about four point seven as well. Um no adjustment to industrial, um and the only increases in commercial were based on. Um any new growth that was in that class, which was, part of it was that Countryhead. Um was added there and um some other property that shifted from one class to another to be commercial. Um that's why you see a jump in that number. Um so the rest of it is just your LA four numbers by property types. Um your exempt properties actually increased by six parcels and about. Six billion dollars, because some property went out of taxable to exempt.
That that wouldn't be state property, would it? Uh land that went to the state?
Not, not all state. We did have a couple parcels go to state.
But they still pay, right?
Um this, the ones that went to state will pay on the reimbursement, as part of the reimbursement.
Is that on here?
Probably not for about three more years, though. It takes a while for the state to do their reconciliation. And they just did one two years ago, so in three years, they make the adjustment on the cherry sheet. They only do it once every five years.
But it's cumulative.
Yeah, yeah, it's cumulative, but you don't, I mean, they they put that parcel on the list that year. But they don't give you any money for the five, four years you didn't, or three years you didn't get the money.
So we lose.
Yeah.
Right off. So the Wayne Roy site was paying taxes, the state took it.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna get any money.
Not until the fifth year, yeah. Well, three years from now, cause that'll. Was it three? Yeah, it's three more years.
So what what type of properties want exempt on?
So we had a parcel, we had three residential parcels that went from residential to exempt to um. Um arc of innovation, um so developmentally challenged homes. Um.
So a nonprofit.
Yeah, nonprofits. Um, I don't remember the other two off the top of my head. Do you remember?
No, I just remember New York.
Okay.
So some of the reasons would be like a religious or nonprofit, education.
Yeah.
The state.
Right, church properties, I don't know, but there were six, so maybe the m- the multiple state ones.
And the land trust.
Yeah, the land trust, yeah. So you'll see that on the cherry sheet. Um, so let's see, new growth, we covered that, total town valuation. So overall, um property values went up uh four point six percent. Um but there were some property styles, so when people get their bills. Um people that lived in older homes, um ranches and capes are still a hot commodity. Um unfortunately, those properties are a bigger increase in their values. We'll see a bigger tax bill. Than their neighbors who lives in, live in colonials or um raised ranches. Houses that are larger and bigger and more costly to heat just aren't the market these days. They're not selling for a premium. Um that is just, and it's not just Hubbard's, and it's all over the state. Um, hmm, so that.
Under the the uh forestry. So that's when um if someone puts their land on this, chapter sixty one A, B, or C, is that, is that how that works?
Sixty one, sixty one A and sixty one B.
So B is recreation?
Yes.
A is agriculture, and it's just plain oh sixty one is uh forestry. Now that doesn't include state property, does it? That's privately held.
That's right.
Is there a category in here that's just the state?
Um it doesn't, I don't break out the state. I, all I have required to do is to put an exempt number at the bottom of the page. So this page here. Yep, right at the very bottom, says two hundred and ninety, two hundred and sixty nine parcels are exempt. And that's the total value. So if you'd like to, a breakout of what those are, I would be happy to do that for you.
Well, there's always a number that they say the state pays us.
The state pays on only state owned reimbursable land, not state owned, non reimbursable land. So there is different categories of state on land. There's a reimbursable category, which is typically held for watershed. Um the rest is just, they own it, but they won't give you a dime for it.
Oh, because there was something that always says, oh, they pay for all that land, so it's only the watershed.
Pretty much, yeah.
If somebody could lay it out for Jamie, that would be like. I agree, too. I still don't get it. I mean, I.
Oh, really?
You know, I still don't fully get it. We we, I feel like we hear different answers, even from some of the the old planning board stuff when they.
Yeah, cause Tom used to say that they pay uh like a a pilot, you know, they pay.
Right.
I forget.
It's a state formula for a reimbursable formula that the state has for state on land. And so state on land, even uh our state on land is um the way that our property values are. So they all, they'll look at the values of our state land every five years. It used to be every three, but now it'll be every five. And that's why they moved their state on land revision date to match up with the revale date. So there are, um the formula is is driven by them, based on their reimbursable formula. So our land, the way our land rates are set up are very specific to those particular parcels. So um so like, you know, a Joe Q Public who has a buildable lot. Um we say he has a prime site, like everybody does, has a prime site and some rear land value. So they come in and they send their appraiser over to their reimbursable land and they say. Hmm, now this isn't buildable frontage. There's a little water there, there, it'd never be buildable, so we have to change the land values. Uh and we're only getting what they tell us it's worth. So unfortunately, they they use the land values that the town has, so to speak. But they have their own reimbursable formula and way of setting the the primes and the rear land acreage.
So they may actually probably go to a property, have their appraiser there, and the appraiser says, hey, that's buildable, and they won't go after it anymore, potentially, right? Are they?
Oh, no, they'll they'll, and we'll put it in as a prime site, and we may have four prime sites. And when in fact, maybe we would have only put on one. So they have to look at um. Uh road frontage, land area and any other uh topo- uh topographical issues that are related to the site. And they're very specific, whereas, you know, we look at land en masse and and um don't do as. Unless a property owner comes in and says, you know, we have issues with it, we don't scope out every single piece of land that we have. And try to figure out if there's issues there prior to it happening. They do. So, but I can, I'll run you that report. It takes me five minutes and I can just shoot it. So, but I can, I'll run you that report, it takes me five minutes, and I can just shoot it over by email um to Ryan, and then he can distribute it to the board, but it'll break down all the exempt parcel parcels, all state-owned like, by reimbursement and by non-reimbursable, then anything else that is held for the state, whether you have s- uh state buildings, I I can't, off the top of my head remember, just because I have too many towns. Um, and then all of the other exempt code, which are your land trust, your religious, your education, your um.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Any other type of nonprofits.
Yeah, I know, in the Open Space Report, it says there's eleven thousand acres that are permanently protected, but I don't know if that's all state land or if it means what exactly that meant, if it's because it's wetland.
Oh, okay, so you.
Or if maybe if that's the number, if it's all those combined, uh, on the state.
Okay.
I mean, what's what's the acreage?
So you want the use by codes, you want the acreage in the use.
And we've, I think we've got that number before, but then it was, I think Tom had said, no, that number was wrong, the acreage.
Yeah.
I remember that.
So.
Okay.
I'll see.
All right, I can get to that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, um, you have anything else for us?
Um, other than I'm just providing you with the actual paper copy of the LA five that needs all of your signatures, and we'd say there is um on the last page of your, is it the last page of your hearing? Notice, oh, yes, so the the last page, the voting, uh tax shift factor, the proposed motion is on there for um, somebody wants to read that, to accept the single class. And then we, you've heard the three thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and three cents of excess levy capacity, and then you can all sign.
Okay, anybody wanna make that? Wanna do it?
Just read uh this paragraph then?
Yes.
Okay, as a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to accept, uh, the Hubbard's Board of Selectmen votes in accordance with Mass General law, chapter forty, section fifty-six, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year two thousand nineteen tax rate, and set the residential factor at one point zero with a corresponding CIP, what, what is that? CIP?
This, uh, commercial, industrial, personal property.
Commercial, industrial, personal property shift of one point zero pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Hold on a second, uh, any discussion, questions? On favor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Okay. And everybody needs to sign somewhere on the bottom and print their signature, yes.
So sign and print or something like that?
Sign and print, please, yeah.
Can I get a copy of that with the hearing?
Oh, sure.
Just trying to be helpful. So Jamie, the number in our um local receipts is, last year was three hundred and thirty-three thousand. It's about the money you get from the state for that pi- watershed pilot.
Three hundred and?
Thirty-three thousand.
Yeah, that's the number that I think Tom used to say.
So I'll confirm that that's all from that, but that's my understanding is that's where that state money goes in local receipts under pilot.
So I'd be curious to see how many acres just the watershed is, and then how many acres do they have that's?
Non-reimbursable.
Non-reimbursable.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll try and get you that answer.
Okay, so that that's pretty much it. The only change we have is now the Board of Assessors needs to electronically sign that paper. Um, I'm assuming next year you'll all be required to log in on Gateway and sign that at a meeting. Um, we did, yeah.
I'm gonna take the, we're just gonna take off.
We do docu-sign too.
Okay. Hmm?
We do docu-sign too.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
So it's getting to that point.
All right, well, thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Okay.
Thanks for saying, take that.
You're welcome.
Um, well, just, just cause it's right below it, you you wanna um just do number five real quick?
It's old, old business, sure.
Elm Street.
And the tier report after that.
Yeah, Elm Street sidewalk replacement update.
Right now, I can just upload it to the D O L.
So the uh, I walked the entire length of the Elm Street sidewalk today, looks good. Travis has been there almost every day, cause he's thorough, uh making sure they're following up. Um, he did say, why would you try and grow grass in November, and I said, you know, it's just the time of year that we're doing it. So they are gonna come back and and reseed that that dirt and loam that people see. But other than that, it looks really good. Uh Travis pointed out a couple issues that they addressed immediately, uh they've been very responsive. I've been communicating with T E C, we pushed the final walkthrough date to next week, hopefully when it's a little bit warmer, uh to try and give it some time to finish, but everything is on track, contracts ready to go.
No, no change orders that came up?
Uh, nothing that we know of yet. Um, I don't know that for sure, but I should know that in the final walkthrough.
No troubles filing yet for us still in town.
Uh, none that reported, none that reported to me, and uh to me, walking it and looking at it, that the best part is the exit and the entrance to the schools are now wider and safer for the.
Yeah, it came out nice. Yeah, it used to be a good bump there too, now it's a nicer approach there, we are exit.
Yes. So it's um, you know, just a a good product for the town, well done, I encourage people to come, come walk on it, that's what it's there for. It was pretty cold today, though.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the uh the tax agreement update?
Yes, so um I just wanna, we've been updating you a lot on this, just trying to to keep everybody updated. So uh currently, the it's with Borrego, Borrego is assessing some of the the battery storage and what impact that would have on the pilot, so a- any changes that are made are are either gonna be the same or in our favor in terms of the pilot, but uh it's with them, it's not with us right now, so we're, we've done everything we're supposed to do to include having legal review it, so we're waiting to hear back from Borrego and have them sign it. Um, also, the, on the um building side, building permit side, that's also being reviewed and ready to go as well. So it looks like things are moving forward, and I'm really hoping to have that agreement for you on December tenth, but like I said, right now it's with Borrego.
Okay, great. All right, now, I guess we'll just leave it up to you here, items uh three and six are both really you, so just whatever order you wanna do them in, uh feel free.
So let's do the report of entry findings.
Okay.
So the full document is uh available, it's quite a bit longer, I just have a a presentation that hits some of the highlights, but that'll be made available to the public and to this board. It's also a living document, so um I'm working on on making sure that that it's current. But uh entry, entry report for for those watching or those who are familiar is uh when a new executive comes in, it's good to have a plan for when you come in, what you're going to do in those first six to nine months to to be guided. I communicated with this board on what I wanted to do and promised that I would give a report of the things that I found. So that's what this document is. The idea of this document is to have it inform um a longer strategic plan, now that I've done my initial analysis, um and to get feedback from from you and other boards, other community members on what they think of the things I found and how I wanna be directed in the future. So useful exercise. And I summarized it without getting into the next slide here, but I just wanna reiterate, I don't think this is an executive exercise, I think it's a conversation that should result in what does the town want to be in five years, Hubbard's in twenty twenty-four? What is, what do people want the town to look like?
Framingham, yeah.
What did you say?
Framingham.
Framingham?
Good luck.
Guess you're running for mayor. So some of the goals, these goals, uh when I interviewed for this position, um and and gave you what I would do for an entry plan, these goals come straight off that, so this is just uh reiterating the goals that I had, so learning about key events, town norms, developing a written assessment, and developing uh objec- objectives with priorities that would guide future initiatives. Next slide is data collection method, so what I've done is is reviewed as much as I could, old studies, regional reports, emails, files, guidance documents, and uh those from other towns as well that are like Hubbard's and to include meeting with uh previous town administrators here in Hubbard's and others in the area to sort of get an idea of Hubbard's and and what it was planning to do and where it wanted to go, say, five years ago.
How'd everybody sort of receive you um with with um, you know, sort of that, were they helpful?
Yes, so uh Rayanne came in and and met with me and and uh really helped me last year during the budget to understand some of the stuff that she worked through, and also talked about some of the things that she wished she had gotten to. And I spent quite a bit of time with Anita, who was talking about, you know, some of the challenges of of a small town, but also what what she had planned for two thousand nineteen and twenty, um back when she was uh when she was the town administrator. So she was super helpful, walked me through everything, and uh both have been available to me by email as well as Brian, so tried to create some continuity, I didn't wanna recreate everything. Um, I I think that's a silly way to operate, so. Also did structured interviews with staff, elected officials, volunteers, residents, um I don't think it's an exaggeration to say over a hundred now, different uh interviews with people, um health conversations with this board, the planning board, and the Board of Health, talk about, um those are the three major elected boards, where they saw themselves going, uh reviewed town infrastructure, uh physical visits as well as plans, and then started discussions with groups, committees, and businesses. I'd say my one biggest weakness in this first six months is I wanted to get to each business and talk to them individually, only got to a to a few. Uh Todd's been doing that as Economic Development Coordinator, I've kind of left that to him, but our plan is to go out together and sort of gather that additional data, so that is missing from this original data collection.
How's your um, uh what's your level of comfort with building plans or site plans and all that sort of stuff? Do you have, does that stuff make sense to you?
It's getting there.
Yeah.
Um, what I am good at is I lay it on the table and I tell them, what do I need to know from this? How can I look at these in the future to understand them? Uh I'd I'd say I'm getting better, but yeah, I need more more time with them, they're complicated.
Yeah.
Um, I rely heavily on the professionals to to explain it to me, um and try and understand at a level that I could explain it to a resident. That's it's really where I'm at right now.
Sure.
I try not to talk about it too much in front of you, cause I know that's an area.
No, I, I just, I I take it for granted sometimes.
Uh, so these are the areas of analysis I'm gonna get into, all again, just touching them briefly. So operations, human resources, the budget, financial management, economic development, infrastructure, and communication. So operations, so I'm talking about operations, I'm talking about department-level function. So I observed, uh we have, very lucky, our employees are excellent, um our team right now is is very good, very cohesive, um very capable. Tilted heavily towards the the bigger department heads, the department heads from bigger, they've been strong and stable and and here for a long time. So they've been running the show, I'd say that's both a strength and a weakness, in that, you know, we need to spread that wealth across.
And you're talking police, fire, that sort of stuff?
Police, fire, town clerk, or the uh three primaries. And as you'll see, when I talk about financial management, almost everyone in that area is new, so we, I've been spending a majority of my time working in that area. Uh, some departments, some of the, I don't wanna call them smaller, cause it sounds insignificant, but the um volunteer-led and and elected official-led boards and committees that have professional staff, they need to, just to be a little more clarity for them in terms of who do they report to, whether or not they're a department or a board or committee and how that works. And that's just um charter problems one-on-one, just trying to figure out who reports to who. What we've done, I've tried to establish a cohesive, goals-based culture, and that's that's a long-term thing, um but I feel like we've set a good foundation. Professional development has been a focus, and then you you've seen documenting policy and procedure is is sort of my number one target, trying to get things on paper, so that we don't have to keep recreating the wheel.
Right, and I think, you know, like the the all departments report, that sort of thing, just, you know, helps out sort of indirectly with goal-based culture, right? Cause you know, you've you've sort of um got this responsibility that is gonna have to sort of show some um some growth or some action or whatnot, so I think that's that's a real good way to to just, without being direct necessarily about it, at being this, this is what we're trying to do, it just sort of happens organically.
And people have been really great about submitting to that too, so I've appreciated that. Um, and then, so department improvement plans is the next step, so after this review and and just getting a hold of what's going on in the town, next year we'll be focused on, okay, what can we do to improve our departments and hold ourselves accountable there? So you'll see a lot of that next year. Uh, in terms of human resources, the next slide, so um this is highly dependent on the skill of the administrator. I have some H R experience, but we'll wanna address this in terms of long-term sustainability. If you were to hire someone or or that didn't have any H R experience, then it would be a real problem, because everything funnels through the the town administrator in this sense. Uh, sometimes you get people who are good at budgeting, et cetera, so just something to think about.
Yeah.
Uh, there's probably a need for a professionalized service to limit liability and increase organization here, and that can be done a variety of ways and not that expensively, so regionally contracted or or promote someone internally to focus on it with a stipend. Uh, we've been rewriting policy and procedure, addressing wage parity, and investing in professional development. Um, mostly Lori has been going to a lot of uh H R classes and reporting back things that are current and that that have learned, so we can integrate them.
What what are those like? Or, you know, just like, you know, not not a, looking for a huge answer here, but is that like, you know, a couple hours sort of thing where they go over what?
Um, I've actually taken three of them, I did one that was a full day, um and then I just did one last week or not last week, two weeks ago, that was two days. Um, so I actually went there from eight to four every day, um.
Speakers, working groups, has a?
Speaker, it was a speaker, and then they broke us down into working groups, you know, with the person sitting next to me, um, you know, what they had in their facility currently and what we had and what we needed to improve. Um, the last one I went to was really good, because we came out with a plan of what we needed to do, and she helped us do that plan to be, you know, legal compliant, um, you know, make sure everything is is where it needs to be, so I can.
And that includes forms that need to, yeah.
Forms, yeah, forms that need to be turned in, employee folders, so that's something I've worked with Ryan.
Employee folders.
Um, before I went on vacation, I actually ordered some stuff to update the filing cabinets, and um so that's a main focus with me now.
Okay, thanks.
And the the docu-sign is also gonna be useful for that, so getting out a form that needs to be acknowledged annually is something that's gonna become a lot easier, a lot easier than emailing and having them print it and then go collect them all. We've been trying to address it cheaply in those types of ways.
Okay.
So some future goals is to have a comprehensive, currently updated H R policy and to perhaps outsource that H R function in some some capacity. It's not gonna be all of it, we can't afford that, but um in s- in some ways, just get some assistance there.
So how do you, what do you outsource? And it's a sort of a broad question, but wh- when it comes to that, like what what circumstance w- w- would be outsourced?
So a good example is when we get a new hire right now, so the uh we're working on getting a new employee checklist and a handbook and those things that we would bring in, but right now it's you sit with Sandy to go over some, and Lori to go over some payroll and documents and some some documents you need, then you sit with me to get your planning direction, and then I try and get other staff members to sort of coordinate that function. So if you outsource that, that would be just a streamlined process, so that new employee comes in and they feel like, okay, you know, this town is is organized and and they have their their path, and I understand what I'm doing. Little things like, do you have a login, do you have a place to sit, do you have all the the stuff you need? Um, do you have all the documents that you need signed as your employee folder setup? Like that takes us a lot of time, uh for pretty cheaply, you can outsource that and just have it be.
So with that outsourced firm, we would have what our established policies are, and then that employee would go to that, not necessarily physically, but would go to that firm to get all that direction?
Sure, or even co- um have a portal to log into, and then they would call, and that would be their first couple days, let's say, setting themselves up.
Okay.
Um, or just have a de- employee that we can dedicate to that, uh is another way to do it. Uh, right now, it's just, it's a little piecemeal, um and it can be me, I just don't know if that's the best use of of what you want my time to be.
Yeah, you know, you're not the first one to have brought that up over the last five years.
Uh, there's some significant liability in some areas too, I I don't think we have any right now, tremendous exposures, but you could, and that's, you know, that's a a game changer, so you just don't wanna mess around with H R too much.
No, we've had some tricky situations over the last.
I understand, trying to be polite. All right, budget analysis is the next area. Um, so budgeting, I've gone through all of the old budgets and gone well, you you can tell that I'm heavily focused on trying to make this a policy-driven um and and year-to-year sustainable type procedure, so would like to get policies and procedures in place that are are less limited in terms of budget creation. And also move from short-term budgeting to long-term budgeting, so making decisions now that impact three years from now rather than than reacting uh crisis to crisis. Some current events, in interventions that we have, uh really empowered my finance team uh to lead this charge, to make sure that we're recommending things to you that make sense, that we can actually do that are sustainable. Uh, publishing those best practice financial policies, we did some of that tonight, communicating budget goals to town officials, just tried to get information to everybody, so it's not a surprise. And then creating long-term plans, um becoming famous from my five-year plans, but that's intentional, I'm trying to get us focused on five years rather than one. Uh, future goals are to continually update these financial policies so that they make sense based on current economics, and also solidify forecasting and planning as processes that are just things that Hubbard's do. Financial management, so this differs in term from budget in that this is the day-to-day operation of the budget, both receiving revenues and expending for uh different purchases that you need to keep the government running. So there's been some heavy turnover on the finance team, and that can cause some some issues here. Um, very few published policies, so again. Very few published policies, so again, policies and and procedures exist and they've been in place and um, our audits reveal that there's no issues, but you just wanna make sure, especially with turnover. That people are falling into a system that that is sustainable and makes sense. Uh, the financial management side is a little short term focused, would like to get them thinking longer term, meaning you're um, hitting your reconciliation dates. Ahead of time rather than trying to catch up all the time. Um, and we are really close to being at that level, so I'm really happy with the progress we've made there. And then cross department communication is is, I'll just be blunt, is poor, we need to have more communication, that's reason for the finance team and other interventions. They need to be able to talk more about what each other's doing so that we can all hit deadlines together, uh, with the same level of understanding. It doesn't mean they don't talk at all, these aren't like doomsday things, there's just, gotta be able to talk, um, more effectively. So we've been cross training staff, I've been bringing in staff members that that may or may not have an interest in.
Can can we just go back to that, sorry? Formulate the thought, so is that what, is that because they're just, they don't have, or haven't had shared services, so there hasn't been really a. A a reason to communicate?
So I I would say it's from two things, you have contracted employees and non contracted employees, so that creates uh, some of that. If people are here some days and not here other days, so just naturally, there's those communication barriers that that aren't possible by phone and email. But also, when you're so focused on either trying to catch up from the past or to get that day's task done, you don't, just don't have enough time to communicate about. What are we doing and say, you know, and I get a little pushback from that, like I wanna talk about the tax rate schedule in July, so that we can be ahead of the game. People are trying to close the year, right, or they're trying to do all these other functions that that they need to do, and they're doing their job, they're supposed to be doing that. So getting that focus to be, okay, we're not just the now, um, current operations, we're also future operations, it's just a culture change. That that requires that communication and I just don't think it's been done.
Would it be beneficial to actually have uh, put with within the year schedule, um, meetings with the dep-. Christ, your Christ department and the boards?
Yes, so we've been, uh, the finance team, we've gathered more people, since there's more talking, we forced ourselves to meet, cause there's always a reason to not have a meeting. And um. And we've s- we've structured, I've worked on structuring a calendar so that it makes sense, right, so we're hitting this checklist of items each month. We're also developing a financial management checklist and then creating deadlines for financial management objectives like reconciliation that will be reported to me in a memo. So then when I do quarterly reports with you, I can say we've hit two out of three or three out of three benchmarks. But those are like, you know, when they publish the guide about municipal finance, that's what it looks like, if you show me a town that has that, you know. So the goal is to get there, or to try and get there and to always be trying to improve, not gonna say this is gonna happen by Christmas, uh, it's just something to work on. So future, uh, current inventions, we are publishing policy and procedure and cross training staff and that's where we're at right now. So once we have those policies and procedures in place, we'll start talking about uh, some of this great stuff that I was just mentioning. Future goals are to continue to update these policies so they make sense and focus staff training on long term financial planning, so everyone's really excited to do. Um, legitimately excited to do, uh, because it makes the job more more interesting and it feels like you're headed towards something. Okay, economic development, I know this one is is near and dear to to Hubbardson, so there's been a lot of great efforts about. Uh, economic development with little overall coordination, so there's a lot of people doing a lot of great things, um, maybe just not together. Uh, there's few supports for existing business, especially during startups, that quote comes directly from an existing business or two. That it just took them a while to get going, but once they got going, Hubbardson is a great place to do business, so that tells me we need to focus on that, um, how do we support existing businesses? So rather than focus necessarily on just bringing in new business, how can we make our current business stronger and when we do get one, to keep them? Um, and Todd's been working on that. Uh, move towards regional growth rather than just Hubbardson growth, I just don't think this region is is gonna develop in individually. Each town's not gonna develop on its own, so that regional focus is a step in the right direction. Uh, it worked in a lot of different pockets of areas in central Mass, I I think it's gonna work well here. And then our infrastructure, as as you know, limits overall growth potential, so um, focusing on what we can do and being really good at that is better than trying to be something that we can't. Current interventions, we have the grant funded economic development coordinator, which has been a godsend, um, he's a great, great worker and has done a lot. Uh, you'll see a lot of the fruits of his work in the spring, uh, as he's comes out with what he's been able to accomplish with his meetings, et cetera. But he does meet here almost every week with members of the community to talk about just different initiatives and to get things going. And also, there's been a more coordination with that increased communication between boards and departments and other community members, I think people. Are encouraged that they can talk to each other. Some future goals, would like to coordinate all this economic development function, whether that's in a stipended position or um, empowering some of my time to be focused on that. Which is not likely would happen anyway.
Or regionally shared.
Um, and there's talk about that, it's Todd's helped not just here but in other places, so it's just, what's that gonna look like? Um, and what's it gonna cost? Regionalizing Hubbardson's economic development is kind of the same, or um, invest in a coordinator, all under the same umbrella. Infrastructure, so this is, the town has done a great job investing in its infrastructure and you're seeing that pay off with projects just everywhere, starting to move. Um, some things that do need to approve here, just some inventories and some project management, um, so that it gets passed from person to person or ev- each person knows what they're responsible for. Um, and then overall, we're nearing a critical situation with our building infrastructure, um, at some point, there will have to be a decision that needs to be made. And that's gonna be more expensive than planning it, so I don't think that's a surprise to anyone, but since nineteen eighty eight, they've been identifying this as a problem, it's not going away, it's been forty. Thirty years, can I do math? Yeah, it's been a long time.
So where are we at, wh- while we're talking about that, unless you have it in your TA report or something that I don't recall seeing?
I I don't, so currently the architect is starting to schedule meetings with uh, police, fire, council and aging, et cetera, to start. Taking those old plans and saying, you know, what were the good and bad and and uh, what would you need and what can we help you with? And then they'll likely come here before you see something final, so. I've been communicating with them every week. So currently, I'm creating inventories and checklists to try and fulfill some of that that promise and and figure out that inventory and project management side. Also cross training employees on project management to, um, for example, the fire chief is working on the. Um, exhaust mitigation system right now, Travis obviously has a lot of good knowledge about how to do these projects, but that needs to be shared and communicated. Um, so it's not just on him, and then we're updating those infrastructure improvement plans uh, for the buildings. For goals, we should really should have some project management policies and procedures and then all of these need to be nested into one plan, a master plan. Um, that's used by everybody. And then the last piece is communications, so um, we have a very engaged community here with the, not a lot of mechanisms for communicating, so we've been working on this. Um, multiple communication fronts are necessary, we have a aging population in Hubbardston, uh, so. What I might use might be different from what someone else might use, et cetera, that's not always age based, so we need to make sure we're uh, hitting everybody. Uh, with our communication, so we're trying to think of different ways to do that. Uh, but I do think there is a greater awareness, we're getting more responses, uh, more pings on social media, more emails, more conversations. So uh, communication is something that just has to continue to grow. Things we're working on currently, the all department and all board reports, uh, and been getting good feedback on those. Uh, we've committed to the town website and integrated it pretty heavily with social media, so we see people actually engaging with the website and we're working with each department to make it more robust. And then um, my particular area of interest as we move into budget season is making it robust and informative, so that um. Voters are educated on things like the tax rate and benchmarking and other things that help you make decisions about whether or not we need to to spend more or less money. So some future goals is to publish more in local media outlets and blogs, there's a online newspaper starting in Hubbardston, I've committed to. Writing in that online newspaper a monthly article, uh, just as another medium for for sharing information.
What's what's it called, do we know?
Um, I know, I don't, I'll get you that answer though, it's gonna be starting soon, it's gonna be, it's pretty interesting, um. I'll get you better. Sorry, my mind's racing a little bit.
The second one was just cause of the answer to the first one.
Um, wanna con- continue to create reports for residential awareness, not just reports for reports sake, but stuff that helps people understand. Our decision making processes and then make town activities as transparent as possible. So conclusions, um, it personally inherited a a great staff and a strong uh, volunteer engaged community. They've built a really strong foundation, so it's it's pretty easy to build off of, so although there was a lot of recommendations, it's a report, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be forgotten that there's. There's towns that are in terrible shape, this is not one of them, this town's in good shape and it can get better and that's where everybody wants to go, so that's what we're gonna do. Uh, the most pressing issue for me is that cohesion that you kept hearing talking about, that my office should serve as that cohesion, bringing. Um, various activities together, so that everybody's working off the same uh, same sheet of music in terms of developing the town. Sustainability is paramount and and I say this because you have a lot of um, employee turnovers historically. And economics affect this town in a in a major way because of the limited resources that it has, so that sustainability will help. So sort of tame those peaks and valleys, and and that's why it's a focus of mine. And then communication from town to resident is vital, uh, when you have limited resources and say, we we need these things and we only have this much money. Communicating that properly to the resident is the difference between, you know, solving that problem or not, so it's important. Some recommendations, uh, just move through these really quickly, strengthening policy and procedures. Um, specifically, I'm talking about forecasting, capital planning, reserves, debt management, financial management, so these are all things that I've been done working on and committed to. Uh, continue to improve communication mechanisms from town to resident, upgrade the building infrastructure, easier said than done, but doesn't mean you don't continue to try. Invest heavily in improving the driving surfaces, uh, that makes this town more attractive and both residential and commercial industrial growth. Commit to coordinating economic development function through a dedicated employee, so this is that, uh, perhaps regionalization or or staying committed to this economic development coordinator. And also, um, investing heavily in our current businesses. Need to finalize the master plan, en- engaging the planning board in this, in this sense, um, also trying to find them resources, because it's not something you can do with a thousand dollars. You need, you need assistance and grants and help to get these things done. Um, and get it done in a way that everybody's gonna use it too, cause there's no point in creating a document unless it's the document. And then, um, at some point, yeah, you might consider an operational budget override, once the town is in a sustainable place to secure the town's future. Uh, that def- budget deficit is not going away, doesn't mean we can't survive year to year, but it's at some point, um, if the town residential. Request for services continues to grow, um, given the way the schools grow and revenues are coming in, it's gonna need to be addressed at some point. That's not a tomorrow thing, I know that's a, that's a hard word to hear, override.
You are on your own.
I make recommendations, so the next steps, um, develop those in department improvement plans, that's something we're committed to. Publish the policy and procedures from this department to the strategic level, I'd love to get to the strategic level, but right now we're focusing on the department level. Continue to implement goal based operational evaluations, so tie our evaluations of employees to these these goals that they create. Uh, and then create a five year strategic plan, a a vision for Hubbardson twenty twenty four. Um, and and that's the type of thing, and I wrote this in the report where. I'm asking town officials and residents to think to themselves, what do you want Hubbardson to look like in twenty twenty four, cause it seems like it's really far away, but um. We need to start planning for what that looks like now, if that's gonna be done, for example, if if this building, um, initiative's gonna come to fruition. Or certain services are wanted, we need to make these goals and decisions now in order to get there. Otherwise, you're just delaying it again, and the town center project is a great example of that, and how long, how long you been working on that? S- seven years?
I mean, it's, I mean, the committee's been around for three and a half uh, or so, um, but you know, I know the discussions came up early on with uh. With Anita as well, when she was starting along here, so a while.
So, I mean, anything worth doing is, in municipalities, it takes a while, so what do we wanna look like? And uh, I'm just thrilled to be given the opportunity to to try and help us get there.
Well, fantastic, um, I guess, um, I guess my first question would be, you know, you you, you brought this to the table. Right off the bat, right, this was what you were gonna provide as an entry entry plan. Um, you're the one who lived it and you're the one who developed the initial plan and now has analyzed, um, how that's gone. I mean, just sort of broadly, how how do you think you did with with fulfilling what you had hoped?
Um, so it. When you take the job and you start doing it, like there's enough to do every day where ignoring something like this would have been easy. And then sometimes it it was, but it forced me to to look, right, and it's sometimes it's easy to have my ideas and be like, let's do this. But I I wanted to commit to looking at at stuff in the past, and when I did that, I found like, all this stuff has already been done, it just needs to be and thought of and and. Discussed, and it just needs to be to be coordinated and pushed, I mean, you need some type of champion is the wrong word, but it's it's an advocate, someone to to push it forward. So, um, I think I laid out what that might look like, uh, based off the analysis and now, um, like anything, you need to go execute that. So I think this led to more work, like directed work, cause I don't wanna just sit in my office and and do things, I wanna do what's important. And prioritize and and get that done. And a- also, you know, the town could go in many different directions and I guess some people in my position would say, we need to go in this direction. And I don't think that's true, I think it's based off of everything I've analyzed, um, there needs to be some more conversations about what, what do we wanna be as a town? And that helps inform a lot of decisions, what size budget do we want, what type of buildings do we want, do we wanna be known as this community or that community? I think it's all doable, uh, but some of them are more painful than others, but doesn't mean it can't be done, I'm happy to do any of those. So I I was surprised to come out with that answer, cause sometimes you go to executive um, trainings and say, you need to make sure that you're doing this, it's just not. Not who I am, so I'm glad I went through that that process to understand kind of where Hubbardson thought it was gonna be and and I'm ready to see where Hubbardson wants to go now.
Okay, um, I I think just one one thing I I wanna add to the the summary that you just presented, um, when I first looked at it. A couple hours ago, now, um, I looked at the summary, um, I I saw future goals on all those, right? So we just went through them, a bunch of different future goals, and that's such a, um, uh, a broad statement, right? But then going into the actual report, you you, I think you almost should have outlined that in the presentation by saying, because for each of these things, you say year one. Year two, year two, three, so it is focused as well, it's not just like grandiose future goals, it's it's also in detail about for each of these items, which I think is great. But that's that, I think, I think that's an important part of this, is that it's not just, hey, it's a goal, it's like, no, here's a goal for year one, here's a goal for year two for this, so I think that that's, that's a, that's a great thing.
I also know I overshot too, so. I know it's not all possible, but we can try.
I wear that, yeah, um.
I think the bottom line on many of these things, particularly the uh, infrastructure is selling it at the polls, you know, to the people who would. Possibly vote, you know, d- down on a lot of these uh, proposals, I think we need to, you know, do a better job of selling it to the people and. As you have pointed out, it's not going to go away, the buildings, condition of the buildings and the problems there, so I think. In the past, when we failed, I think we need a better job of selling it, and or getting the word out and and. In your report, it's obvious that communication keeps coming through, this is a key thing that you are pushing and I for one applaud you for that. Cause I think that's cer- certainly the bottom line, we have got to be able to convince these people on on these various things that, as you said. One, it's not gonna go away, two, it's not gonna get any cheaper, so.
It's just gonna get quite a bit more.
And it has to be dealt with, absolutely.
But I thi- I think you tend and this might be just in general, to focus on on sort of negative comments or things that come up, I don't see a lot of that. There there are some that exist, but a lot of times they're focused on just their niche thing, right, so they have a complaint about this, but everything else is okay. Overall, I believe the town is is very positive about its future and positive about its challenges, and that doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna. Get this particular project done, but it's, it to me, it was, you hear a lot about negativity and I don't see it, right, and that was good.
The uh, tad to what Jeff said about uh, the infrastructure, like the roads and the buildings, um. And you know, maybe trying to convince people, you can try, but you know, when they get in the voting booth or when they vote at a town meeting, they're gonna vote the way they want, but. When they have a, you know, we've done a lot with the roads, we've made a lot of improvements, we still a lot more to do, so if you've got a neighborhood with us. Cause we've got some horrible roads still, and those people drive those roads every day, and when they see like, you know, you wanna build a building, you know. And they have to drive on a road that is just awful, they have a hard time, I think, uh, voting for. You know, a big expenditure for.
I think, uh, voting for, you know, a big expenditure for a building.
Agreed, and it's not unique to Hubbardston.
And I think if we keep going the way we're going with the roads, fixing them up, that will help garner some support when they see that they're, you know, we've made a lot of progress on the road, but we still got a long way to go.
So I, you know, I thought about this before, um, just to that point, like Spencer last year did a pro- uh, an override for like eight million or ten million for the roads.
There you go, yeah.
So would that be something that, you know, people would be receptive for, because so many people have to deal with the roads on a daily basis, so, and I'm not necessarily saying we should be throwing it over right out there, I'm just saying, is that something from a a a larger standpoint that people would be able to get around, um, uh, su- supporting wise, so, I don't know, it's something to think about anyway.
Yeah, maybe we could pick a few pro- you know, a few roads and, you know, you know, or or maybe you'd have to do it like say that it's gonna go in the road fund, because if you pick the roads, then if it's not my road, then you're not gonna vote, maybe, you know, who knows?
No, that's true.
You know.
I think they were, they were specific, but you gotta yeah, they were, they were specific, I think in Spencer, um, uh, on which roads it was gonna be, which I know is this slippery slope, but you also kinda wanna know exactly how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
So you gotta sort of evaluate how many linear footage I've got, what drainage needs to be done and all that, when you get your estimates, when you're actually gonna go for the money. So, uh, anyway. Um, okay, you got, anybody else got anything for Ryan on this?
Yeah, just, and I think we said this before, may maybe consider a a zoning change, I know that would take town meeting, but, you know, the zoning on sixty-eight, you could change it all the way from Roland to Gardner, and there's very limited lots that could be built on because of, you know, the state owns it or too wet, you know, and then let the planning board, you know, say it did pass, the zoning zone the whole thing commercial, and then let the planning board deal with what comes, you know, just wait and see what what comes, and if they don't like it, they can deal with it, you know.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on this?
Nope.
All right, thanks for uh putting this together, appreciate it.
Good job, good job, yep. TA report is the only thing left.
As long as, as long as we don't get like a exit plan.
They don't have an exit plan.
All right, so we've got one, uh, one main item left, which is the town administrative report.
Yeah, more reports for me, everyone's excited, all right, um, just the, I'll go through this quickly for you, just happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
You as well.
Uh, we sent this out before that, so, um, happy to see the staff had a great time with their family and friends uh during the holiday. Um, communicating with the regional school, um, this is something that, I didn't put it up, thank you. This was a goal and a something that the board asked me to work on, so I have asked to be on their agenda. I'm going to present them our five-year financial forecast or a shortened down version of it and um try and make this an annual part of our budget process, so they can at least see on the municipal side uh, what we're facing as they make their budget decisions, so.
That's a good idea.
Uh, just more of that communication between departments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, also wanted to talk to them about their capital plan and get more of a prioritization from our school department on what they think is their capital needs and what is coming for the next five years, just like some more clarity so that it can, our capital plan can be more specific and useful. Financial management, uh, we're reviewing the second half of our financial policies, if you if you like the first half, wait till you see the second. Um, and we'll also be fielding our department budget requests, I'll be going over that with the finance team as well, so everyone kinda sees what everybody needs, I think that helps. And then, um, all of it will be weighed in upon for my budget, I believe it's a collaborative process, so although it's my budget, I I believe everyone should have some input. Budget update, uh, I have it for you in in your packet, but we sent out our department request forms today. Um, they're due on December twentieth, and starting in early January, uh, every department's required to meet with me to go over any changes with their budget, and um by then, we'll also have the five-year capital plan, so all of that will inform my budget. And once these are finalized and you've seen my budget, we're gonna uh have the boards and departments meet with the finance committee um, as as requested by them or the finance committee in order to continue that tradition, I know it's been done in the past. Uh, would like that to continue, so that every department has a chance to explain their budget. Um, we did send out in guidance, the guidance that that you gave me and the finance committee, that they are to provide level service, uh, level funded budget with level services, um, and any change from that would need to be described. Uh, staff holiday hours and party, so uh this year, the the two major December holidays fall on a Tuesday, which creates sort of a situation. So I am recommending uh that we hold our staff holiday party on December twentieth, looking for your support, four P M. Um, mandatory fun, as we call it in the military, uh, this board is of course invited to that, but uh we're gonna do a potluck and uh just have a good time, s- celebrating uh what I think was a very good year. I'm asking for the board's support in closing town hall on Christmas Eve, which is the Monday. Um, and then early release the next Monday at four P M uh for New Year's Eve, although we're normally open till eight on that New Year's Eve, I I doubt uh, people are gonna be coming to town hall, and I'd like the uh staff to be able to spend some time with their families.
Absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely.
So this would be a a a paid time off on Christmas Eve, that's why I'm looking for the board's support.
Meaning, we have to put this in a form of a motion?
So me, me, it's a
Uh, I would like that.
Okay.
Meaning that it's essentially we're a di- addition additional holiday.
A closing Closing town hall for, because it falls on that Monday.
Agreed. Somebody wanna make a motion about that, unless they don't wanna make a motion about that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the uh New Year's Eve release.
No. And Christmas Eve release.
And Christmas Eve.
Closure.
Closure of the town.
Oh, closure of the town hall.
Okay.
Um, and I will make provisions for the for the union employees as well, because um not everyone gets time off in those holidays, so
Mm-hmm.
we'll make sure that those employees are also able to spend some time with their family, it's even
Oh, it doesn't stop.
Yeah.
So, I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
Any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, uh, I'm out, just wanted to update the board, I have uh military training starting tomorrow to Thursday, uh, just a three-day course. Uh, not expecting anymore until the summer. And then, of course, that changes, but uh, December fourth through six, I'm going to another MCCPO class, which is part of my goal, it's procurement. Uh, this time, design and construction services, uh, so that's the next two weeks, I'll be here on Monday and Friday and now Tuesday, Thursday. Obviously available in both cases remotely, uh, and I've put provisions in place. I do believe that I'm gonna be able to get here to sign the warrant, I've been given two hours of military leave in order to get that done. But if the board is willing to designate a representative just in case, I would appreciate it.
I'm available.
Yeah.
It's all right with the board?
Jeff can do it.
Okay.
Somebody wanna make the uh
I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff, that's uh designated, it's s- signee.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, uh, employee recognition, so this this happened a little bit ago, but I wanted to make sure it was publicly recognized, so Jared, our V S O, passed a state certification and then went to, um I used to call V S O school, but uh certification training in October, so his level of knowledge has doubled. Um, and he has received that certification that's required, so that's making sure that our veterans are getting the the best possible service. Uh, Jared's great, he's really good with our veterans and uh he's doing a good job, so just wanted to recognize him. Upcoming topics, um, working through military leave policy and I'll be, I'll be candid, I'm struggling with it because it only impacts me right now, so I'm trying to make sure that it's a sustainable policy that makes sense for the town of Hubbardston, so um, just, I know that's due to you, I'm just trying to make sure I do it correctly and recommend something good.
Are you just drawing on what what you had in the past?
So that there's, it's opening a can of worms to discuss it, but there's a state, you can adopt a state option that the state employees use, but it's really convoluted and nobody understands it, so towns typically ignore it, if you look at local towns that have this town, for example, or others, it just says, we follow state federal statutes, which doesn't really do anything. Um, so I've been speaking with some H R directors and people with experience of how they, and even in some cases, they don't know, so just wanna make sure that we do something that that makes sense. Um, it obviously impacts me now, it's not my primary concern, my concern would be um, we tend to hire veterans and service members into uh civil service, we don't know civil service, but public safety positions and that has some budget implications, et cetera, so just wanna make sure, um, we're good to go in that sense.
Is that in?
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, basically, the uh policy can't be debated, because the individual, such as yourself, and I know this from my own experience, um, when you have to put in the time, you have to, uh, so that you have no choice, so policy is pretty much, we has to be the, you know, to allow it.
But it's about compensation and
It is, so compensation is the side, so right now I'm putting in, you know, leave for for my military training and that's, I understood that that was gonna happen.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, sure. Right.
Um, that's fine for your executive, I think, but for uh for for other employees, I don't know if that's fair.
That's not in any of our union contracts, I just can't recall.
It says it falls to the town
State, oh, oh, the, okay.
Policy and the town policy defers to the state, but you have to adopt the state.
Okay.
Not uncommon, and this isn't unique to Hubbardston, um, this is an area of expertise for me, it's difficult.
And when, and when we hired you, it was with the understanding that you had a military, you know, requirement, so we basically, you know, have already accepted the fact. But now you're asking, or is it, am I misunderstanding that you want something written out?
No, because you don't get paid, or do you get paid?
Only if I take, well, right, I get five days.
If you take vacation.
If I, otherwise I have to take vacation.
Right, so this policy, this policy would change that, it would make it such that, you know, there's no
Clarify it, in other words.
Well, that there's no no vacation days or no whatever else has to get taken and that, it's just military leave pay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So it's, it has budget impact, so it should be discussed.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's difficult, so I'll just be candid again to the board, um, I've hid my military service in applications before 'cause 'cause of this particular discussion, so this is something that needs to be thought out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just wanna let the know the board, I'm thinking it out, it's not just, hey, I'm recommending ten days or whatever, um, we're trying to get you the best possible policy.
I hope you don't get this bad mail to the board.
All right, move on, move on.
I serve with the will of the president, the uh five-year finance forecast is done, being edited, embedded, that'll be presented um at our next meeting. Five-year capital plan's coming in January, and then we're updating our road maintenance plan and planning out that hearing for January, so upcoming topics.
Okay, uh, we have reached, uh, the final items here, matters not reasonably anticipated that a chair, I have none, anybody else have any?
Nope.
Nope, okay, any public or press? No?
No.
Watercooler, you got anything to say, watercooler? Sounds good? Yeah, did you just make a motion to adjourn?
I did.
Second the motion.
Any discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yeah.